Okay, Steve for you. We're all set. Okay, folks, good evening. Welcome to the Red Hook Town Board meeting of January 23rd, 2019. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, Steve, for the folks at home. As always, we have up on the screen for them to view tonight's agenda items. Okay. Very good, thank you very much. First, we will tackle a couple leftover pieces of business from our first meeting of the month. We have additional budget adjustments as we close out the fiscal year submitted from our bookkeeper, Anne Conway. And I think we mentioned she was going to submit her variance report the second meeting in January. We may still have a few adjustments as we close out the books. And of course, at the second meeting in February, I'll be reporting to you the results of fiscal year 2018. Now, most of the budget adjustments are to account for budget lines and the difference between the budget amounts and the actual amounts through December 31st. We received our last quarter of sales tax that was slightly above expectation. Are there any questions about the budget adjustments? Okay, if not, would anybody like to move to approve that?
To move, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Announcements, I actually have no announcements tonight. It was the first thing in three years and change. Does anybody have any announcements?
Let me just say that we want to thank all the residents that came out for our e-waste collection day, Sashon Steve.
How about that?
We want to thank all the residents that came out for our e-waste collection day, which was Saturday. It was very cold. And all the volunteers, including a lot of the CAC members and Bard students who were doing their service projects for January for helping all the residents unload their e-waste. We don't know yet how many pounds, but it was definitely as much or more than last year. Now, it was about 12,000, so it was a lot of e-waste. And I think we should all thank our highway department for doing such a great job during this storm. I know you guys really put in a lot of hours and I think we kind of forget because you just do it so well that, you know, it's worth thanking you and just appreciating what you're doing. And especially Rob, who helped us get the e-waste onto the truck on Monday, which was another day I think he was supposed to work. So, we really appreciate what you're doing. I just want to make sure we got that out there.
Right, and it was a tricky storm. It seemed to be slippery throughout the weekend. Thank you very much. And yes, a reminder, if you'd like to get updates on the storms, the road conditions, anything else, we encourage you to go to the website, redhook.org, and sign up for the notify me feature. We can send updates to you, to your email, and also to your cell phone if you would like. It's all your choosing. Okay, we have a few presentations tonight, but public comments? Would anybody like to make some public comments before we begin? Kenny?
Just revisiting Freeborn Lane, I'm going to be brief because this won't be the last time I talk about it.
Okay.
Reading this document, one thing that's surprising that you received it on December 11th and the first time I saw it was January 8th at the meeting. Would have been nice to see it before so I could, you know, talk about it. Was there ever a title search done?
Yes.
Oh, there was, okay. Reading through this, yeah, there's just three key points and it's, I don't know. They talk about connectivity between West Carroll and Lasher Road. I mean, I don't see that this is an issue. It hasn't been an issue in 30 years. They talk about emergency vehicles. Any emergency vehicles going to Lasher Road, even if Freeborn Lane was open, the last road they would choose would be Freeborn Lane to go down. They would actually come in from 9G and Route 9, so you could throw that out the window. So, half of this talks about connectivity, which doesn't apply, nor does cul-de-sac. You know, when you get to the end of Freeborn Lane on the south side where the gate is, it's one property owner and then I have, you know, labor housing. And there's, there's no, it doesn't even apply for the cul-de-sac. So, and it talks about six properties, there's only four. So, I'm wondering if, even Michelle drove down Freeborn Lane, or did she post some of this just off a Dutchess County parcel mapping? Talks about Tivoli, you know, not having access. So, that means she, she didn't get a, the letter that I got from Tivoli stating that is, you know, if the road changes ownership, that they would have access to their property. So, she must have not gotten that letter. And so, and then concluding, talks about people's potential property rights, you know, frontage. And I don't know if she knows that on the east side of the road, that's all in the conservation easement. So, nobody's ever going to develop the east side of the road. And the rest, Tivoli owns a lot of the other parcels on both sides, on the north side. And it's swamp, so nobody's building on there. I mean, I'll be able to build one spot, but that's about it. So, I think this document cost the town about $900, which I felt was unnecessary funds. And there's no credibility to this document. I did some research. There is a New York State Highway Law 205. And one sentence says, "Every highway that shall not have been traveled or used as a highway for six years shall cease to be a highway." So, basically, the town abandoned the road. So, you know, and I'm going to look into this more. I found about eight to 10 lawsuits when property owners sued towns because roads were abandoned. Most of the time, the property owners won. A couple of them went to the Supreme Court. And I spoke to an attorney who worked on one of them. He's retired, but he's going to refer me to another. So, anyway, it's the responsibility of the town because it's, everything I'm reading, it's saying six years. Looks like the time span for a road to be abandoned. And so, hopefully, I could do this maybe through New York State. You know, I'm going to put a letter together for the board to read. And then we'll see where it goes from there. And if I have to take legal action, I will. There's just one firm, you know, deals with a lot of real estate litigation. And then the other thing is CHIPS. You're familiar with CHIPS? It's the Inventory of Highway. It's a consolidated local street and highway improvement program. So, has the town, you're getting money, you have to take an inventory of all the roads in the town. And have you been getting money for Freeborn Lane on the repair and on, you know, any improvements on the north end of Freeborn Lane? So, I don't know if...
Where they...
Kenny, I'm sorry. If you could just, if you could summarize that in an email to us, maybe we could...
Right.
...give you responses to that, but...
Yeah, I'm going to put this in a letter form. I don't want to take any more time. I know you've got a big night.
Okay. Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. And we can address that, we can get with Theresa and address that question and other questions for you.
But, you know, I don't want, you know, I don't know how many legal fees the town uses, the funds. Hopefully, you know, there's not a lot of unnecessary funds used for these kind of things. You must spend thousands of dollars in legal fees in the course of a year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kenny. Okay, any other public comments, folks? Okay, very good. If not, can we delve into our agenda? We have a couple of presentations for this evening. First quarter of business, number one is discussion of healthcare plans. You've had our packet from our brokers. You've had a chance to review the various plans each year to see any changes. If there's a plan that you think would be more suitable than the one that we're currently on, which is the MVP Liberty Silver Eight. I included for you at our previous meeting, a utilization report up to, at least that period, I think was at the end of, you know, December 31st of 18. I wanted to compare to you what was budgeted over the last couple of years versus actual in hope that you will consider two things. One is to keep the current plan because it seems to me, once again, for now the second year, that it's the best plan for coverage for our employees. And the second request, because we have budgeted enough in the 2019 budget for what is likely to be a typical utilization year, whether we could consider fully funding the copays deductible for 2019. So, that's my request to you, is if you would consider both those items, continuing with the plan and for fully funding the copays deductible. And so, any thoughts on that?
My only, my only question would be the financial implications, which is, which is the... Do we, you're telling me we have adequate funds to pay the premium?
That's right. We did not, well, we budgeted 100% for the premium. We had an expectation of what the premium would go up, which was 9%. We budgeted entirely for that. What we budgeted for is on the three funds is 70% utilization. It's looking like on the larger funds that we will come in, you know, of course, nobody's got a crystal ball, but we'll come in within that 70%. And for the smaller funds, you know, A and B, where there are, you know, less employees, of course, it could result in slightly higher utilization, but those actual dollar figures aren't that significant. And certainly, it's something that we could cover. So, I think across the three funds, 70% should be enough. And that's what I put in the budget back in the fall of 2018. And that's what you approved in November. So, that's my request to you for 2019.
Employees will have the same coverage they had last year.
That's correct.
I'm in favor of that. Just want to make sure that everybody's happy with the coverage.
Bill, well, it's great coverage, it's a great plan. Okay, Bill?
Fine with it, yeah.
Okay, Kristy?
Give me a resolution or...
We are about to make a motion, so I'd like to propose a motion that we continue with the MVP Liberty Silver Eight plan for plan year March 1st, 2019, through February 20th, is it 8th or 9th, 2020? And to fully fund the copays deductible. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Aye, thank you very much. All right, moving on to item number two, a discussion on proposed legislation, natural resources. So, we have a task force that's been working for more than a year?
About a year.
Just about a year on proposed changes, recommendations to our zoning code with regard to our resources and in particular, commercial sized extraction of some of those resources. And we identified that what we had on the books was woefully insufficient. And so, you came in front of us five months ago, four months ago, something like that, with some initial thoughts. We gave you some initial feedback. And you're here again tonight with a first draft. Is it fair to say, maybe, if you'll let me, a re-draft on some recommendations that you proposed to me? Okay. And so, who's going to make a 15, 20 minute presentation followed by a couple of questions?
Can do that.
Okay.
Get my heart out of the way quickly. So, it's going to be a little bit of a tag team effort and I hope that there's a lot of back and forth with the board as we go. My name's Julia Solomon. I serve as a volunteer on the Conservation Advisory Council. And as Robert mentioned, we were tasked, the CAC was tasked with leading this revision process and making recommendations for updates to the zoning regarding particularly timber harvest, mining, and water collection. We have been meeting since about last January. We came before you in the summer, received your feedback at the beginning of the fall. And at that point, began to work more closely with our two contracted consultants, Ted Fink from Green Plan and Russell Urbanmead of the Chase Companies, to figure out how to take those recommendations, which were made pretty high level, and work them into something that was really integrated with the code. So, I wanted to start out first by acknowledging and thanking the members of the working group who have put in countless hours, a really dedicated service. So, we have Charlie Lang in the room, David Depstakis also in the room, Karen Schneller McDonald could not be here tonight, but is here in spirit. And Sarah Imboden was our liaison with the board and also very helpful. So, it's been a great group. I think we've really chewed on some of these topics, some of which we came to consensus on pretty quickly, others of which we circled around a lot, as I think you know. And so, I'm going to leave it to our experts to talk really about what you have in front of you. I will just say that we, what we as a working group came up with was much more of a conceptual set of recommendations of what, you know, we came to understanding of what was in the code now and we knew what we wanted it to do. And then we looked at the consultants to have us figure out how to really integrate that with the current code. And so, what you see is quite technical because it's sprinkled in lots of different sections of the zoning. And so, I don't know for sure whether what you have, you know, illustrates what it was that we were trying to achieve. And if there's confusion about that at all, it would be, we'd be glad to talk about what it was that we had in mind. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Ted, you were kind enough to prepare sort of a summary.
I did.
Maybe if you could give us, because I can tell you already, having, having reviewed this and I know others feel this way, we're going to need some time to go over the proposed changes in the zoning because it's fairly difficult to get through, frankly. And to, yeah, it's taken to understand it. And so, you know, anything you can do tonight to at least sort of encapsulate the main points. But I don't know that there's going to be a lot of back and forth. Maybe there will be, but certainly, there's a lot for us to study here before we can even pose any semi-intelligent question, at least myself, speaking for myself. So, if you would, Ted, would you take over and just give us a summary of...
Be glad to. I'd like to give you just sort of a big picture over what is in the draft. And preliminary draft, I think, is a good way to talk about it. It's by no means at this point, anything proposed. And I wouldn't want to imply that that is the document that you have in front of you. And because of the way that local laws work, we have to work through section by section, article by article, within the zoning law. And so, when you see bits and pieces that are proposed in the zoning, and that's because it's reflective of all the different parts of the zoning that would affect a particular use, a particular special use permit, the way that a zoning change is enacted, they're all in different parts of the document and they don't always follow in a logical order. And so, it was, it was your suggestion to come up with the document that basically summarized how I was able to take the working group's recommendations and translate them into an actual proposal. And certainly, the attorney has not chimed in on this. Russell Urbanmead has seen it, but I haven't really heard a lot about, you know, the inner workings of what's in here. And this is at a point where it's at a good stage of the process to be able to have a back and forth on it and to get the board's views on it. But as far as a big picture is concerned, first of all, what I wanted to do was to address water because that was one of the ones that, one of the three issues that was most difficult to try and get a handle on. Currently, groundwater withdrawals and the associated bottling works is permitted in the ABD. It's permitted in the light industrial district, which is not mapped. And it's permitted in the R3 district in the town. So, it takes in a fairly broad area of the community. And the concern was whether or not to somehow delineate a small scale water operation, which is basically what you have already in existence in the town. And try and delineate that from a large scale operation where you might have a huge industrial operation with trucking and massive water withdrawals and that sort of thing. And I think the idea was to create some sort of a bright line that may be based upon the amount of water that's withdrawn from the ground in order to qualify for a permit from the town. For this particular use, a special use permit is currently permitted. And given that it's in such a broad area, the idea was rather than create some sort of a potentially arbitrary number that would apply to the number of gallons to be withdrawn from the ground, to take a different look at it and to look at it as the industrial use that it really is. And it's in the table of use regulations as an industrial use. The implication of it being permitted in the light industrial district implies that it is a use that has the potential for having detrimental effects on the community. And of course, that was one of the concerns of the working group, that what are the effects on community character? If we were to have a big use like that established within the town, what would be the effects on noise and traffic and a whole host of other issues that would go along with a large industrial operation? So, when I took a look at the zoning, and this is where it gets really confusing. You have a light industrial floating district. You have a light industrial overlay district. The light industrial floating district exists in the text of your zoning only. So, that district has never been mapped on your zoning map. And the only way to be able to establish a use that's permissible in the light industrial zoning district would be to have an applicant make a petition to the town board to amend the zoning map. And any sort of an amendment like that to the zoning map has to go through all of the same procedures that any text change in the zoning would also have to go through. And the way that it was envisioned, at least as I can see from what I've been able to surmise from a review of the interplay between these different zoning districts, the light industrial overlay and the light industrial floating. The floating district is a district that the community wishes to have somewhere, but doesn't know necessarily beforehand exactly what are the best places to allow the kinds of uses that are allowed in an industrial district like the LI. So, it doesn't map it, but it allows for a process to be developed where the applicant has to go through a two-stage approval process. The first stage is to address whether or not the use is appropriate through a zoning map change before the town board. And then, of course, if the town board determines through the legislative process that it's an appropriate use on that particular site, the zoning map is amended. And then the applicant goes to the planning board for all the other approvals that are necessary, such as site plan approval, special use permit. So, the way that the light industrial overlay district works, that district exists, and again, the zoning map doesn't show it. It's in the text where the text of the light industrial overlay district says that the overlay district for light industry is coterminous with the R3 zoning district. Okay? So, if you want to have within the community, a light industrial zoning district through the floating concept, it can only be within that light industrial overlay, which also happens to be the area of the R3 district. All right? Now, this changed a little bit when, in 2011, when so much of the R3 district was converted to the agricultural business district. But it was also carried through as a permitted, specially permitted use within the agricultural business district. Okay? So, what I thought would be an appropriate way to address this would be rather than continue to allow this in the R3 district, to ensure that the use is appropriate in the community based upon its characteristics, based upon the site, based upon the highway infrastructure. Can it handle the kind of an industrial use that would have 18-wheelers coming and going on a, you know, perhaps a daily basis? Could it, if there was an associated bottling works and they wanted to bottle the water? You know, bottled water is a popular commodity. That also is probably 18-wheelers shipping it in and out of the community, okay? Taking water out of the community to other places where it's sold as a product. So, it seemed to make the most sense to subject the groundwater withdrawals and the associated bottling works to that two-step process. First, to come to the town board to make sure that the site is appropriate and suitable for the use based upon the community character and a whole host of other environmental, you know, factors that would be brought to bear for that. So, what you have in here is a very simple amendment to the zoning. And that is an amendment to the RO for the water extraction and associated bottling works that would remove it from the R3 district and only permit it in the light industrial district. That wouldn't affect the existing uses in the town because they would be pre-existing non-conforming. They could continue to operate within the community. And in fact, they could expand by up to 50%. And if they wanted to expand beyond that 50% threshold that is, is the limitation within Article 8, the non-conforming use section of the zoning, then they would have to come in for a zoning change under the light industrial floating district and request that change to the map so that they could establish that use in a broader, on a broader basis. Or if there was another party that wished to establish a groundwater withdrawal and associated bottling works within the community, that would also have to go through the zoning map change. So, it would give the town board the ultimate authority to say, yes, this industrial use, even though it's in a rural residential portion of the town, you know, that R3 light industrial overlay district area of the town, because of the way that it's, you know, it's proposed, it's not going to get out of control. So, the town board would have that ultimate authority to be able to make that legislative decision about allowing for the introduction of a new groundwater withdrawal use in the community. And then, if the town board makes that threshold decision, it would go under the planning board for all the planning type issues, compliance with a special use permit requirements, compliance with site plan approval, and all the planning issues. But it seemed that the zoning issue was a threshold matter for a use like this in a community. And what I can say is that in all the communities that I work in, it's unusual in the first place to see a light industrial floating district. You've got it on the books. I don't know how long it's been on the books here.
Wow.
A while, yeah.
And now, it's the subject of some nervousness.
Yeah.
Because it could land anywhere, you know?
Could land anywhere, yeah. And if you remember what happened a little bit more than 10 years ago in the town of... Mylan, they also had a floating light industrial zoning district, and it didn't go well there. There was litigation involved, it actually involved New York State, and it went to the appellate division, the New York State Court System, and the New York State Attorney General's Office actually defended the town in that case, and the town prevailed in the end. But it was because an industrial use, not knowing where that industrial use would land, you know, if it was in your backyard, you might not be so happy to have a new industrial use locate right next door to you. So it does present a number of planning issues that are usually worked out, you know, industrial districts are usually well-defined. And the floating zoning concept is usually reserved for uses that you want to encourage in the community. And industrial is one because of all of the characteristics of industry. It's one that there is, as you say, some concern.
Yeah, I know when we, when we had the rezoning as a part of Centers in Green Space, we identified the area south of Annapheur as perhaps being appropriate for light industrial, its proximity to Route 9.
Yep.
The border to residential areas was significant, the buffer, rather. So, yeah, I think there's, you know, at least on my part, there's some concern about having a flight of, of floating light industrial.
We had actually discussed it at the time, and, and it was, it was a to-do item that we didn't do yet, but, but I, for one, would want to eliminate it.
So I'm sorry to interrupt you, just to, just.
No, that's okay. No, it's, it's a two-way.
Yeah.
So, yeah, please do. So that was, that was the basic concept. And let's see if there's anything else in here that is a particular... Oh, as far as, yeah, I wanted to mention the AB district, because taking it out of the, you know, the AB district, you know, it, the way that it is right now, the light industrial overlay only allows industrial uses in the R3 except for the AB, that also allows that one specific use. But when I looked at the purposes of the AB district, it actually has some language in here that would lead me to believe, as a planner, that the intent of that particular district does not include the potential for industrial uses that are incompatible with agriculture. A couple of the, a couple of the purposes of the AB district, first of all, it's protection of agriculture and to separate agricultural land uses and activities from incompatible residential, commercial, industrial, institutional, and public facility development, and to prevent fragmentation of the town's existing agricultural lands by non-agricultural development. So I would question whether or not the, that particular use would even be appropriate in the AB district. And so the draft that I prepared does not, it would take it out of the AB district. So that's a, that's a question for you, and whether or not this is something that you would want to continue to allow in the AB district, or whether or not you want to limit it only to the light industrial overlay district through a zoning change petition to establish a light industrial floating district on the map. All right? So that's, that is a question.
All right.
Let's see, what else? There's, you know, the, probably the biggest part of the discussion of the summary document that I prepared for your review, and I, you know, I only got it to you today, so I don't expect that you've taken a look at this, but it does give you sort of a cheat sheet on what are the main points of it. And then, as far as the remainder of the, the recommendations of the working group, they did ask for some aspects of the water withdrawals to be beefed up and more protective of the environment, and so those provisions were added to the, to the draft law that you have in front of you. Let's see. Then, as far as the other amendments, three other amendments. One has to do with mining, and the recommendation from the working group was to split it out into small-scale and large-scale. And for communities that have done this exact sort of a move, what they've done is they've used the delineation between the small scale and the large scale to be the actual thresholds that the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation regulations have for obtaining a mine land reclamation permit from that department. And that is 1,000 tons of minerals a year, and there's some other thresholds in there. And when it requires a state mine land reclamation permit, local governments are severely restricted in their ability to regulate the operations of those mines. This is an amendment that was made in 1991 or '92, somewhere around there. The state made a gamble, and the gamble was, they wanted, they, they didn't want to have local government involved in regulating mines, operating mines, you know, the operations of the mine, because the state said, you know, mining minerals is part of the state economy, it's necessary for our growth and development and that sort of thing. So we want to severely constrain what local governments can do as far as putting, you know, regulations on the actual functions of a mine. But it also left it up to communities to decide whether or not they wanted to prohibit mining entirely. Okay? And so that's what happened when the, when the mine land reclamation law was changed in the early 1990s. So what many communities have done is said, okay, fine, we'll abide by the New York State regulations on this, New York State law, and if it requires a DEC permit for mine land reclamation, we'll stay within the bounds of what they permit for, through the special use permit requirements of the local zoning. So what other communities have done then is said, okay, that's the line. If it requires a state permit, we'll require a special use permit in compliance with the state regulations. But if it's less than that, then we will get more involved in regulating the operations of a smaller mine. All right? So 1,000 tons per year, it's not a huge amount, but it's still quite a bit of truck traffic, and if it was on local roads and so forth, that has the potential for doing damage to town roads and causing nuisances to neighbors and that sort of thing. So that's been split up into two separate areas, and the regulations that you already had in place in the zoning for those mining operations that would require a state permit are pretty much untouched, as they are right now. Okay? Because they're in compliance with the state law. But for the small-scale operations, those would be subjected to a special use permit by the planning board, and there would be other regulations and rules that would, would govern how the planning board would approve a smaller mine within a town road. Okay?
But we do have the choice of eliminating the, the major mining altogether.
You do have that choice, yes.
And, and most of that mining that was, that when it was allowed, that would have been in the ag business district. And certainly, I wouldn't want to see that happening in the ag business district, which leads me to believe that there isn't any place else I'd want it either, because...
Okay. So could, could you speak to what's permitted in the ag business district as far as soil mining in your recommendation?
Well, yeah.
So we had discussed whether we wanted to make specific regulations based on the district, and particularly considering the AB district. What we ended up going with in this version was a regulation based on soil type, and Ted can speak a little more about that.
Say that again?
Yeah.
Please, I'm sorry.
I couldn't hear you.
Just that we had, in the version of the law that's in front of you.
Yeah.
We have, correct me if I'm misreading, but I believe it would prohibit the mining and commercial sale of.
Prime.
Prime soils and soils of statewide significance, I think.
Yeah.
And that that was in the end cleaner and more targeted at what we wanted to accomplish than just doing it by district.
The concern was removal of your town's prime agricultural soils, important soils. And if they were going to be mined and taken out of the town, the ability to be able to encourage agriculture and allow agriculture to continue would be compromised potentially. And so that was incorporated in the small.
And you're reading this best provision in the regulation. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, one of the few things that caught my attention, I would go further than that, to say that I don't think we should be soil mining off of ABD parcels regardless of whether or not they're prime or soils of statewide importance. There's a lot of support lands, I know there's both firsthand, being a farmer, and certainly familiar with a lot of the properties in, in our community. It would be nearly impossible, as you know, the soil maps are basically guidelines, they're not, you know, they require onsite sampling. It would be impossible for us to enforce something like mining based upon soil types. I mean, I don't know how we would logistically do that. And again, you know, I think that even soil types that are from, you know, four, category four through seven, you know, are very important to farm, so I would be very reluctant to allow, especially since, you know, there are public dollars in, in many cases that went to preserving these farms. And so that's just an initial, you know, feedback from, from me, anyway.
Okay. Any other questions on mining before I move on to logging? Okay. So with the logging, basically what we did was to also take a look at the different types of logging operations that would occur in the town. And for the large-scale operations, big logging operations, we had talked about five acres as being the dividing line between something that might have a lower level of review from the town versus a larger-scale logging operation that could involve large amounts of truck traffic, lots of noise, potential damage to town roads and so forth as a result of the heavy logging trucks. And so the five acres was used as the break-even point between large-scale logging, commercial logging, I should say, which would be required to go before the planning board for a special use permit. And for that special use permit, all of the sorts of concerns that the working group had identified in their due diligence as they worked on this over the last year, those were all incorporated into the regulations and the rules that would apply for the large-scale commercial logging. And then for the small scale, that would be the, the logging operations that would involve less than five acres of land. The idea here was to establish performance standards that would be very similar to the kinds of performance standards that would apply to the large-scale operations, also subject to special use permit standards. But to do so in a way where it wouldn't put an undue burden on a small-time operator that only wants to cut down a couple of acres of trees. There's certainly a lot of exemptions in here for things like properties that are under the forest tax law, 4ADA, you know, Christmas tree cutting, and, and there's like 13 or 14 different exemptions where you wouldn't need a permit at all. But if you were going to have a commercial logging operation, a smaller one, you're going to be taking logs off the site, you need to address also highway department concerns if it's on a town road, and obviously, the performance standards. And so there's references in here to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, best practices, and their timber harvest guidelines, that these are the things that the state has said, these are the controls that all logging operations should abide by, and those are the performance standards that are incorporated into this. The difference between the large-scale and the small-scale, though, is that rather than having to go before the planning board, it's done through a code enforcement officer permit. So it's done at the town department-level permitting, and there's a section of the administration in the zoning, I think it's Article 9, that permits the town board to empower the code enforcement officer to issue permits for things like this. And so that's one of the provisions that was incorporated into this. And the code enforcement officer, there's language in there that if that person was in doubt as to the potential for adverse impacts, even though it's a smaller operation involving less than five acres, they would have the authority to be able to refer it to the planning board to handle it as a large-scale commercial logging operation, having to get a special use permit. So all the applications would have to go through the code enforcement officer. If it was more than five acres, five acres or more, it would have to automatically go to the planning board. If it was less than that, it could stay as a town approval, but just wouldn't have to go through the public hearings and, you know, all of the, I mean, I don't want to call it rigmarole, but all the kinds of things that applicants have to go through in order to obtain planning board approval. And, you know, logging is, is a means for property owners to be able to keep open lands open, you know, if they can derive some economic value to open space. And New York State has certain requirements that local governments give deference to forestry as a legitimate use of open space within the state. And so it takes that sort of framework and allows for smaller-scale operations to be done on a relatively simpler basis, puts in a, you know, a safety valve allowing for referral to the planning board, even though it's a small project, and then requiring all the larger projects to go before the planning board. So that's the commercial logging. And it's all, you know, if it's commercial, then that means the logs are being sold. If it's logs that are being cut down on a property and they're used on the property, whether it's for firewood or in support of a farm operation, or a maple syruping operation, or if somebody wants to cut down trees and build a timber frame house, or a log cabin or something like that, that would all be exempt. Okay? It's only when the logs leave the property and, and then, you know, cause potential off-site impacts that the regulations would kick in. Okay? And then there was one other, one final thing, there's also one other provision in here, because there was a concern about someone that might regrade the land, cut down trees for review, and not sell any of the, you know, the products, whether it's soil, whether it's trees or whatever, but simply to have some mechanism in place that would allow for there to be a certain level of review within the town to prevent wholesale destruction of what might be, you know, an important piece of land within the community. And so there's another section in here called tree and topsoil removal that would allow site plan approval for anything above one-half acre. And I think that was the, the number that the town board had discussed with the working group, and I think that was the sweet spot that people felt was reasonable to pursue, and many other communities have done the same thing. Your neighbor to the south, Rhinebeck, if you're going to regrade your land and you're going to cut down vegetation, you got to come before the planning board. Other communities set thresholds lower than the half-acre, quarter-acre, then there are some communities that go with higher ones, and of course, a lot of communities don't have anything at all. So this is an attempt to try and get some control over an abuse of resources on a property that may add value to the community, may add value to surrounding properties and so forth, and, and once it's gone, it's gone. So that's, that was the concept behind each of those different levels. All right? And Julia, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think that's a pretty good summary.
Okay.
And I think you, you will see in the draft, and here, as Ted was describing, that we were working from the beginning to, to really come up with a balanced approach, where we were protective of the natural resources, but not punitive towards someone who was looking to capitalize those resources. And so in, in a lot of cases, there was a whole lot of back and forth within the working group about finding that sweet spot in the middle. And, and so the, some of the distinctions between small-scale and large-scale operation come out of those conversations, and that even in the case of large-scale, it was not necessarily something that we felt was incompatible with the care. felt was incompatible with the character of the town, it was just something that we wanted to make sure that you as the board and the planning board had full control and authority over deciding how to let it proceed.
Ted, speaking punitive, I guess I can think of at least three examples in the last ten years where the town would have liked to have some recourse for somebody clearing trees without kind of going through a protocol beforehand. And of course, we might not have had a protocols, but is there anything in the draft about, you know, fines or, you know, if somebody doesn't go through the steps that, let's say we pass this law or something similar, are there any teeth there for, because I think sometimes we've run into that issue where we don't really have a clear way of saying, you know, he broke the rules, here's the consequence. So I'm wondering now that we're going to lay out clearer rules, is there also like a clear consequence that's laid out in our?
You have an enforcement section of the zoning already, and there wasn't anything built into this regulation that would go above and beyond the enforcement mechanism that already exists. Fines, I think jail, you know, these are all in there already and would apply to any sort of infraction against the zoning within the community. And enforcement, it's always an issue in every community for zoning.
I know we talked about fines in some of the extraction working group sessions, is that not an appropriate thing to bring up when we're looking at the zoning, like to look at the enforcement section and see if there's something we should be?
Absolutely.
I'm wondering like if it is aligned with what other communities are doing, or if there's a way that we can make it a little bit, a little bit easier for the town to, you know, even just have like a sort of a menu of options depending on how serious the infraction is. I feel like sometimes we're in a position where we don't really feel empowered to, you know, find people what they probably should be fined for breaking our code.
Well, it wasn't something that I addressed in this draft, this preliminary draft, but it's certainly something next time I come before the board, I'd be happy to address that issue.
If the rest of the board is interested, I guess I thought that was, should be part of this exercise for me to, to at least look at that issue.
I agree.
Right, I know we talked about that at one point as a board.
Go across the board.
If you wouldn't mind, yeah, especially with trees, I think is where we've seen it, but I think with all of these, if we're going to go to the trouble of making some clearer rules, we'd like to have really clear guidelines about what we can do when people break.
Okay. And I think the recommendations on water are good. I mean, it seems to strike me, I'm glad to see that our existing operation can continue because I think that's been a valuable operation for backup water supply, certainly for local use, you know, our companies have had to take avail of that. Folks who own pools have had to, you know, take avail of that operation. I am concerned however about large-scale bottling operations. I know that, you know, having two layers, that they would have to go through the town board first and then to the planning board gives me added comfort, but I'm hard-pressed to find a lot of folks who would be interested in having a water bottling plant here, for example, you know, of the scale that Nestle or, you know, any other corporation of that size would want in our community. But, you know, we'll take a look at what the recommendations are and see if that's something that, you know, we do want to permit even in the floating right in those rooms.
It's not out of the realm of possibilities. When you think about water being shipped here from Fiji and being as popular as it is, you know, we have a world that's changing, the climate that's changing. We've been told by scientists that some parts of the planet are going to get much drier, and we have abundant water here, and the northeast is projected to see a lot more water as a result of atmospheric changes. And so we're in a good position, and there may be greater demands in the future. And certainly, you know, Russell is here, I don't know if he wants to add anything to the discussion.
I want to add something. We had, five years ago, we had, we had a water company come in here, wanted to buy, wanted to buy water here, our water, and ship it, and take it from here to Kingston in eighteen-wheelers and bottle it and ship it around the country. One of the big, one of the bigger companies using well water from Red Hook where they decided we had among the best quality water available. So why for one would want to outlaw any mining of water here for sale? Period. They wanted to run trucks 24 hours a day from here to across the river and back again.
Just so you know, one of, I didn't mention it, but one of the factors that's incorporated not only into the special use permit requirements for the planning board before it would approve any sort of a bottling works of, you know, a large-scale operation, would equally apply to any zoning changes that the town board were to entertain for a light industrial establishment that would be, you know, extractive. And it would be a groundwater impact assessment would have to be done in order to support the ability of a company to be able to do that sort of thing. And Russell was able to help us out on that and define some of the parameters of what would be included in this groundwater impact assessment. You know, that doesn't answer your questions about the big eighteen-wheelers for and through the community or anything like that, but it does answer some of the questions about water.
Well, if we allow them to mine it here, then that can't happen.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I have to agree with Harry. I mean, we're not in the water business here, and if there is an abundant resource, and as Russell has told us for now, the last 20 years, there's an incredible resource, but we should reserve that resource for our residents. There may come a time where our own water supply gets compromised and we have to move to a different part of the community in order to supply folks with clean drinking water. We read stories about communities facing this issue on a weekly basis, so I would be very hesitant to go into partnership with private companies at the expense of, you know, impacts, whether it's traffic or on our roads, and at the same time, take a resource that frankly belongs to all of us. You know, just because somebody can tap into it at a particular location doesn't mean that, you know, it runs underground through most of our community. It doesn't belong to any one individual or certainly to a corporation. So I'd be hesitant to encourage a large-scale water bottling, and we all know what, just making the bottles alone goes for the environment, so we'll take a look at that.
The rule of thumb is for every little bottle of water, that it takes about a quarter of that filled with oil to produce the plastic, to transport the water, to pump it from the ground and so forth.
Yeah, that doesn't.
This is kind of a sober statistic.
Yeah.
Well, good.
I just have one, as you consider these questions around water, for quite a while the working group was stuck around this sense of wanting to differentiate between large-scale and small-scale on water as we had done with mining and timber, and it's very tricky. It becomes very complex and legally maybe shaky and scientifically shaky, and so I would just discourage the board from going too far down that path because we found that it was not a really fruitful place to be. We, this, what you have been presented was our best attempt at a middle ground, and I would be interested to hear the result of your conversation on where that middle, you know, whether that middle ground is where the town would like to be, or whether they want to be someplace more definitive.
I'm sorry, you're pointing with that it was, it's difficult to establish the?
Volumetric thresholds.
Volumetric thresholds for where?
Right.
Okay, but the state does that, if I'm not mistaken. They do that all the time with requiring permits and so on and so forth. They actually do it based upon the capability of an operation, right? If an operation is capable of X amount of gallons, then it's required to have a permit. Is that correct?
The latest revision of the DEC's regulations were that any, any use that extracts more than 100,000 gallons a day, which is something in the order of 75 gallons a minute, needs a water permit. And to get that permit, you have to satisfy central office, DEC, that that withdrawal can be managed ecologically and without undue impacts on surrounding users, existing users.
Did I say it correctly? It's capable of, it's not necessarily whether they are drawing that amount. I believe it's been changed the last couple of years, right?
Correct. If you have a pump, if you have a pump that extracts 80 gallons a minute, you're in the pool, so to speak, even if you only pump it.
Right.
Yeah, so it has spawned an industry of 77 gallon a minute pumps.
I just would like to say that, you know, I didn't get to see this before the meeting, so I appreciate your overview. So I will look through it further, but there does seem to be some language in here that allows for either confusion or subjectivity. So having been on the planning board for a number of years and dealt with that, I think it's important that we try to get that out of there whenever possible because it just creates that confusion where applicants feel like they're not getting clear answers and that, you know, there's, the way the planning board interprets something or thinks about something might be different than how the town board thought, or that the CEO and a lot of times the zoning enforcement officer feels caught in the middle on these issues. So anything, you know, I would say we want to go to being very clear on things, and if that means that we, maybe we have to say you can't do it here, here, and here, then that's probably a better way to do it than to say, well, you can do it here and here if you do this whole list of things, but you could do it over there if you do that and you get a permit for this and you do that. It just really makes it much more complicated and hard to enforce.
Well, you're in a great position because of your background in the planning board, and so I'm certainly welcome your input on this and suggestions for modifications.
Yeah, I was wondering, now that you mentioned it, if Christine, if you would be willing to work with Sarah, who's the liaison to the working group, and maybe going forward on trying to, once we've got some more input from the town board, working with the group to see if we could finalize some recommendations, a draft, because, you know, sort of time is clicking on here, would that work if the two of you could maybe take on that task? Since the planning aspect and sort of conservation aspect.
It seems like you guys are doing a great job, but I'm happy to help if you think you need, you know, feel like to help, but it's not. I don't want to muddy the waters further.
I mean, my idea was to have like a workshop meeting where town board members could, you know, after adjusting your memo and the law, you know, in an open meeting but like informally to discuss this only, not in like a typical town board workshop, but in a focused, like a working group meeting with any members of the working group and consultants that wanted to be there and really hash out some of these things. I think, obviously Christine, I want you to be there, I just thought anybody from the town board who wanted to be there ought to be, that way we could.
The sooner the better.
The scope of this sort of is beyond any one town board meeting, you know? But I think if we keep putting it up to town board meetings, then it's going to be hard for us to really focus on it and discuss it.
How does Monday, the 29th look for your schedules?
Next week, that's Monday.
Next Monday.
You know, Russell did a study for this about 10 years ago, and I think it might be useful information for you as a group.
Oh, they've been working with us.
You have been? All right.
He's not here just to sit in.
You mean Monday, Monday, the 28th?
28th.
I'm sorry, did I say the 28th, 29th?
Yeah.
Whatever, Monday.
The farmer hasn't gone.
I have a question. Is the document available to the public?
Yes, the document is available to the public, and if you'd like it digitally, we can also send it to you digitally.
And there's going to be a public hearing on it?
Oh, yeah, when it gets to the point where it's a draft.
Right.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Oh, wait, oh, wait.
If you wanted to do it Monday, the 28th, I'm available.
I can't do it Monday, the 28th.
29th, I'm sorry, I said the 29th, Tuesday.
Tuesday.
The Tuesday, that's at work.
Yep.
Tuesday, the 29th.
The Tuesday's starting on the 7th.
7 o'clock, Tuesday.
I'm not getting to be here on Tuesday, I think I have to be more or less.
Okay.
And I would, I would have liked to be part of it if, well, I'm sorry, I haven't spoken.
I'm going to introduce yourself.
Go on in, Russell.
Jump in.
Do I need to be in the mic?
Please, if we would, the mic is on, and if you would just tell the folks who you are and maybe your background.
Okay, thank you.
And what you've done for us over 20 years.
Thank you. That's, I am Russell Urban Mead, I'm a hydrogeologist, I work at the Chasen Companies, I did my master's field work here for my master's degree studying your wellfield and worked with Hank Van Paris and another wonderful gentleman whose name I can't remember, and so that's in part of the lore at this point. Very recently, I think I worked with the town, or Chasen Companies worked with the town to help submit a grant proposal to do some supplemental spillway work at Mill Road Dam. Unfortunately, it wasn't funded, but we appreciated that opportunity. And in the spirit of full disclosure, I was part of the team that was working with Niagara that evaluated the Coker Town Springs a couple of years ago. So on the upside, it means that valuable data were collected which you now have possession of and we can now discuss in public conversation, so that it's helpful to have that supplemental If it is the will of the board to simply say, we're not going to have extractive uses leading to bottling, you don't need me anymore because there's no longer hydrogeologic discretion being exercised. So if that's the direction you want to go, I don't need to come back on the 29th. I have always been an advocate to leave yourself a path to review something carefully. And the things that I see the DEC doing now, and I find myself in a peculiar situation of speaking as a supporter on this matter, for many years, the DEC, central office, hydrogeologists, people who I respect and I've worked with now for many years, their jurisdictional focus was community water system wells. And so if you were a non-community water extractor for anything that wasn't for like the village center or the town water district, if it was not a community source, it didn't go before them and it was reviewed much more informally. The DEC had sort of an epiphany some years ago that said, that's kind of silly, we're missing some of the larger extractions that are not happening, and we're also sort of really focusing a lot of attention on community water systems, sometimes it only take out 60 gallons a minute or 50 gallons a minute and, you know, don't really need our time. So they changed their whole review process and said, we are going to review every extractive project over 100,000 gallons a day. And so they do that now, whether it's an industrial use, a factory use, a, and I kind of make that distinction there because industry these days is, most industries are a lot cleaner than they used to be, so, and, but whether it's a community source, whether it's a new shopping mall, whatever it is, if it's over 100,000 gallons a day, you go through the review process, and I can tell you, having put in wells for those kind of things, there's monitoring wells, there's evaluation of the wetland nearby, there's evaluation of impact on the stream nearby, there's an evaluation of the aquifer, it is all reviewed. So that kind of backstopping, I think, has gone in the right direction, and if any project were to be proposed at the Coker Town Spring that extracts more than 70-some gallons a minute, which is what 100,000 gallons a day backs down, they will need to go through central office to get that permit in addition to anything that you choose to do here. So that's new, and so whereas pool water operations in the past or something like that didn't go there, they do now if they go over that 100,000 gallons a day. So, and I've seen that process work, I've worked on it on both sides. When I work for a planning board, I help review and make sure it's done right, and if I'm working as a consultant for an applicant, I know what I need to do to set to satisfy Central Office and I know those people are there. So that's just a comment. And if, and so you could, you could assume more of that review authority yourself. You could set it at a lower bar. You could say anything over 50,000 gallons a day, which is about 30 or 40 gallons a minute. You could, you could set a criteria that says, we're going to do that for any project that moves water out of the town of Red Hook. In other words, you could relieve, you could provide relief if, as I've heard you saying this evening, you're encouraging a local use. You might say, okay, we're only going to apply that standard if it's, if it's a use that exports water, whether it's for bulk water, whether it's for, I mean, you know, I think that, for the reasons that Ted Fink just laid out, I think that the Northeast is primed for specialty crop irrigated growth. I mean, we're sitting close to New York City, we have water. If we can control the environment with greenhouses, this area is ripe for specialty crop, irrigated specialty crops. And we've seen proposals coming through the Chasen Companies, now six or seven or eight acres under greenhouses that need a robust source of water. That could be another use. You know, there are many potential uses for water. And so you may, you may want to leave yourself a regulatory process for review of the water as opposed to saying, I don't want bottled water, because that might not be the proposal you get and you might, you might have a concern about another category.
All right, but we can distinguish between bottling operations and agricultural support. Right, we already, we already have that going on in town. We can, we can craft our legislation.
So if what you don't like is bottles, that's fine. If what you're concerned about is the vitality of the lakes killed, then you might want to, then you might want to consider something that says, this is the review process regardless of what the proposed use is. This is the review process we want you to use for any project that extracts over a certain gallon inch of water. And that could be an interesting conversation.
Well, you as a former town board member.
Correct.
Remember for the town of Lake Park. Full disclosure, Russell and I shared for each goats for many years. So we need to get that out on the table. You know that we can only pass zoning legislation that's consistent with our comprehensive plan.
Correct.
And our comprehensive plan does not encourage the type of large scale bottling operation that it was envisioned perhaps by Niagara or other companies that are in that business. And so we would be hamstrung to even pass that type of legislation without amending our comprehensive plan. Very specifically, our plan calls for encouraging the small scale businesses, you know, that serve our community. And so I would just leave you with that, that in answer to your question, whether you're getting invited back to the 29th or not, you know, I would say to you, we may not see you on the 29th just because I don't know that we really, we really can allow that type of use at present time.
I believe you have, or you have contemplated, please help me, an aquifer protection ordinance in the town. It would be, it may be consistent with the purvey of the aquifer protection regulation to amend it, to just add some clarifying language on the review process for projects that withdraw over a certain amount of groundwater. That would be an approach that would not be inconsistent with what I presume is consistent with your comprehensive plan, because you already have the aquifer ordinance. So you could contemplate.
Well, that's one aspect. So there's aquifer protection and there is commercial uses within our community. And I guess my point is, I don't see anything in our comprehensive plan that encourages a large scale bottling operation in our community.
But there's also nothing in the comprehensive plan that would lead you to believe that like small scale operations should be prohibited. And that's where I come down on not being in favor of 100% prohibition, even if it does create other existing operations, because let's say that the operator of the current small scale operation were to pass away.
Right.
And then his operation goes unused for whatever period of time it is that a special use permit needs to, you know, eventually they have to be re-applied for, right? If they're not in operation and then we've already prohibited small scale operations. I just don't see a small scale operation as being a kind of thing wanting to prohibit. It's not like we're heavy mining or.
That makes perfect sense to me, in which case.
But then the question comes down to thresholds, which Ted has already said, he felt were almost impossible to set. It sounds like you're more optimistic about that. And I know when I talked to Victoria, she said that there probably are guidelines out there and we just need to figure out what works for us, if that's a direction we want to go in. I was interested to see if we could go in that direction. It sounds like you might be able to help us. But I think a lot of the board isn't interested in going in that direction. So I'm just wondering if there's a way you can sell us on that possibility.
Well, I think what I heard from you, and I'm joining this conversation fairly late, but I think what I heard from you is that defining what is a larger or a smaller bottling process was what was difficult to define.
And I think, and again, this is going back to.
And I grant you that.
Yeah, well, and.
Well, not bottling, but just a pushing, an extraction operation.
Whereas I don't think that's difficult. I mean, the DEC has already said, everything over 100,000 gallons a day gets a permit. So you could, you could just as easily put yourself into that business with that threshold or a more restrictive one. I don't, I don't see that as a problem at all. And the more agnostic you are as to the use of it, the more you can concentrate on the natural resource and just set a threshold that is defensible, perhaps, because we know something about the flow that leaves Coker Town Spring under drought conditions, because we have those data. And so we can come up with a number that someone might want to debate, but would be, could be defended.
Could we see that data?
We haven't.
You haven't.
We do it, have it from Coker Town Spring?
Yep.
I've been hunting that, I've been, but I've.
We haven't.
I've had my life.
So I think it's entirely dual.
Right, for example, keeping it restricted to just anything that leaves Red Hook isn't helpful, because that pool company brings water all kinds of places near Red Hook, but not just within the town.
I don't even think that's legally enforced.
Yeah, it's not enforceable anyways.
But there's another example, and once again, I'm going to give credit to the DEC. The DEC, the DEC has in its regulations, the one example we've talked about is 100,000 gallons a day threshold for when they, when they issue a permit. The second one that I can reference that is in state law right now is an interbasin transfer that removes more than a million gallons a day from a single watershed. And an interbasin transfer means it's not used in the watershed, it is exported from that watershed. So there is a precedent here that separates local use of water from exported water. And you could use that same device to distinguish between a use that kind of, it's not, it's not going to be, if you wanted to use that device, you would be relying on the watershed of the Sawkill as opposed to the boundaries of Red Hook, but it's not a bad fit. So if you, if you so chose, you could, you could adopt something that reflects the 100,000 gallon a day permitting limit and you could adopt something that works at a higher trigger level or a different trigger level, not to anticipate an answer, if it was an interbasin transfer, which wholly exports effectively from Red Hook. So those are some choices we could talk about.
Good. One thing, Julia, I'm sorry, the town supervisor needs to be disciplined. This was supposed to be a 15 minute presentation, it's now on an hour and 10 minutes and it's nobody's fault but mine.
Isn't he free on the 30th?
So.
What can we, should we just set a meeting another time or what should we do?
What I'd like to suggest is that we go ahead since the 29th works for everybody except for Russell. And then you can schedule yet another one and include Russell in. And you're available certainly for emails, questions, phone calls, right? You're part of the, this funded project, you're our consultant on hand.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just.
So don't worry, don't worry, you know, there's many ways to.
Not that I want to drag this out longer, but, I mean, I just can just see that a lot of questions are going to come up that Russell could help answer. So can we just try to look for another date?
Well, what about the following Tuesday, the first Tuesday of February?
And why don't you focus on everything but water?
Yeah, why don't we do that? Why don't we start with the 29th and then maybe you all can get your calendars together for a subsequent workshop? Does that make sense? We'll go on soil and timber. I can't do the, I can't do the first weekend.
I can't either.
So.
All right.
All right?
So we'll try the 29th.
29th.
If enough of us can be there.
Thank you very much.
We'll talk about everything about water.
We have another presentation coming up. Oh, thank you all for all your input. 7:00 PM on the 29th, 7:00 PM. Does that work, Julia, Charlie, Ted?
Yes.
Yeah. Town board workshop at 29, 7:00 PM to discuss natural resources protection recommendations. It's okay. Again, apologies, we need to move a little faster with our agenda tonight or else we will be here very late this evening. Next up, Michelle Glock. We have yet another presentation.
Yes.
So for the folks at home, Cornell Cooperative Extension had a proposal to work with the community to achieve climate smart status, one of the few things we are not in the town of Red Hook, and asked the town of Red Hook if we would be the pilot community to work on this project. Read how long ago?
We started this work about a year ago.
About a year ago.
But you took the climate smart communities pledge.
Oh, yeah, many years ago.
Many years ago.
Many years ago, yeah. But the certification, one of the few certifications we don't have, we're working towards with your assistance, with a lot of assistance from the CAC. And you're here to report on where we are and hopefully where we're going.
Yes, exactly. Thank you.
Stay the way, Michelle, thank you very much.
All right. Yeah, so my name is Michelle Glock. I'm a resource educator for Cornell Cooperative Extension, Douglas County, in the Environment and Energy Program. And Supervisor McKee gave really good kind of intro of that work. We started this work a year ago. We had funding through the Hudson River Estuary Program and the Cornell Water Resources Institute to complete two projects. One was the Climate Smart Resiliency Planning Tool. The other was an assessment of the Climate Smart Communities Program, the certification program to see where the town stands in actually receiving certification at either bronze or silver levels. So the tool, the Climate Smart Resiliency Planning Tool is an action of the Climate Smart Communities Certification Program. Yes, so I'm here tonight just to present, in your folders, you have a copy of a recommendation summary that was the result of going through the tool process. And I'll try and be as brief as I can possibly, but I brought a copy of the tool itself.
I think we have.
We have all of it. Did I have copies of everything?
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
We're all set.
When, when did you tell me?
We've got, we've got it all.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. So the tool is basically, it's six sections, very detailed questions, yes and no answers that basically get at gaps, opportunities, strengths of the town in areas of resiliency planning, flooding vulnerability. There's a public outreach section, so if you've seen all of it, then you're familiar. And after going through all the municipal plans of the town according to those questions, I put together a recommendation summary to just help guide you through future efforts and current efforts as well. So it's just, the recommendation summary itself is a guiding document for you. Also, there is a section with grant funding opportunities that are relevant to all the recommendations, just because we don't want to suggest you do things and then, you know, not also suggest how, what resources are available to you to get them done. Yeah, so, does anyone have any questions? And I don't know how, if you were able to look at.
Well, you have it nicely presented, so we, there's much to look at.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's quite an inventory, you know, and thank you for compiling it. I think in the past, we have sort of informally come up with all the lists, you know, the plans and ordinances and studies and. But you've done a really great job of pulling from all the information that you got from all the various departments and I appreciate it. The recommendations are extensive. I got very tired of reading all the recommendations and wondered, who is going to do all of these things? But, you know, you know, one of the things that we can take a look at is how we can prioritize.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I was just going to say, it helps us, we get approached, programmed opportunities sometimes by other groups or we find them ourselves and maybe it helps us figure out what things are priorities and what things are, what things to say no to.
Did you want to cover just a few recommendations? We give you five minutes and say, you know, because I know you have the major categories, just so the folks.
Yeah, we can run very briefly. I don't know how much more is on the list tonight, so I don't want to take up too much time.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, this is not working.
No.
So.
All right, well, yeah, we can go through the recommendation summary just briefly. So it's on the right side of your folder. And a couple of recommendations. Just an example, you know, for, for strengths, I mean, we outline like a bunch of strengths, but the, you know, the town has your community preservation fund. So, you know, that's a really powerful tool or not tool, but like something for the town to apply to resiliency planning and looking at, and an opportunity that ties into that is the Sawkill Watershed and Flood Mitigation Assessment that was completed also last year, right? So looking at that and kind of prioritizing like what areas to, what land could be most valuable for looking at like, you know, flooding issues. But for the section, section one of the tool is just a checklist so that, that's not listed in the recommendations, but for section two, vulnerability and risk assessment, the idea to create a resiliency plan. Now that you have, that could kind of package a lot that the town's working on, especially with the newly kind of reinvigorated disaster preparedness committee. And others. And then for public outreach and engagement, you know, the new website, there's, you could, you know, we have a couple of suggestions of what you could add to the website and that's, there's a lot you can do just through like linking to other resources on that. Making sure information is in multiple languages is important at times, just to make sure you're reaching everyone. And then, you know, so section four is integration of municipal plans. So that's just getting at like, are plans fragmented or when you're updating, you know, your LW or P for example, you're doing that right now, right? So, kind of just making sure you're integrating, looking at all your plans and integrating them for that, or for your natural resources inventory as well. I mean, that's, that's some major ones. Then section five is disaster preparedness and recovery. That's, um, major ones, then section five, um, is disaster preparedness and recovery. And for that, you know, I, I know we, when we had spoken just in one of our initial planning groups. Creating a list of vulnerable, you know, populations was of importance, you know, that was a priority, so that's in there as a recommendation. And then lastly. Section six is hazard mitigation, um, implementation. So one recommendation there is. Just updating the climate action plan, you know, that's, it's crazy, but like, it's. I mean, it was created in two thousand twelve, but there are, you know, a lot happens in that amount of time and, um. You know, there's definitely opportunities to update that, so we put that in there. And I just want to say that in the recommendation summary. Any recommendation that ties in directly to a climate smart, uh, communities certification action is in bold. So that could also help prioritize what, uh, what you might go for.
So next steps, Michelle.
Next steps, well. I guess, I mean, the board. And others could, uh, review, just review the recommendation summary and. I mean, it really is just a guide or roadmap for you to tease out, okay? Like, anytime you're looking at, um, just reevaluating where you're at or a, a grant comes along, you're like, okay. Like, do any of these, can these match up at all? It's just kind of like a, for you to check in. Through a lens of like, okay, if we're trying to pursue climate change preparedness, resiliency planning. All of this can apply to that, so.
Now, did the board sign on to the next step of this with you?
Yes, yes, so.
That's, I see as the most.
Alright.
Exciting next step.
Yes, so the other project, um, so that was the Climate Smart Resiliency Planning Tool. Also last year, we completed a certification assessment for the town of where they, where you stand. Towards achieving climate smart community certification. And, um, earlier, I guess, so earlier this month, we actually passed a resolution to form a climate smart communities task force. Which, I applaud you on, that's, that's awesome. And so last year, I had worked with closely with the C A C on the certification assessment. And that was our main, that was like the first recommendation for this, for, um. That came out of the certification assessment, though it was really great to see that you did it, um, already. But, uh, through this certification assessment, we found that the town can likely receive a hundred forty-two points. Of climate smart communities' action points. And then at a, at a minimum and then at a maximum, two hundred forty-nine points. And you probably, you might not have a context of what that means, but for the climate smart communities program. You can achieve bronze certification at a hundred twenty points and silver. I think is like, like, I'm blanking on silver. But I think it's like over three hundred, a little over three hundred points, so you, the town can likely receive, um, bronze level certification. Without doing any, anything else right now.
And just for the folks at home wondering why we even care and.
Yes.
You know, about certification or receiving bronze, it, it all sounds silly and on some level it is.
Yes.
But it's really. Sorry, I hate, I hate to be so blunt about it, but you know, um, we're, we're very busy here in local government and sometimes to. You know, uh, achieve a status is not what we're about, we're trying to get, uh, the capability of, uh, having additional grant monies. To fund the important projects for residents and for the township.
Yes.
Achieving this status, like when we became a clean energy community, we received a hundred thousand dollars, um, towards important projects, so. We, we look towards this program that's been similar in, in nature, so.
Exactly, yeah, so it, it basically prioritizes funding for you, um, and, I mean, it. I mean, you also serve as a model for other municipalities and you're only, I mean, you're only as strong as those around you too, so.
Good, so, okay, we'll review this and then the, we're gonna form the task force, we already started, Lori's the head of it.
Surprise, surprise.
Surprise, surprise, surprise. And so, um, we'll come up with the, or they'll come up with a recommended list of, you know, next steps for us working with you and.
Yep.
And we'll, we'll take a look at that and look at our priorities and.
Can you help us get the bronze, like, how does that work?
Yes, that's a great question.
Submit all of this to somebody or?
Well, that's.
Yeah. So. So the town, we did, um, put in a proposal, uh, to actually do that, help with that legwork. So along with the climate smart task force, um, our staff would help upload documentation, get, like, do, do all that legwork. Uh, it's a lot of work. To, um.
Right, like you have all the doc, you have, um. You have the information to list it all in the tables and things, but to actually gather all the documents.
Yeah, yeah, write up, um, a small description.
Right, there's, it's a lot.
For each action, but I mean, it's definitely, like, this assessment really.
It helps, it's the first step.
It helps bump you up, so.
I thought this was a lot of work. It falls in the category of, had I known. Yeah, but good, we're there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sometimes, you know, you, you can look past the pain, but just all the questions, all the answers, all the.
I know.
Okay.
Yeah, well, and, uh, thank you, um, to Robert and to the C A C and others that were involved in, in work that's been done so far. Look forward to, um, submitting for certification with you too.
Thank you, Michelle, we couldn't do without you.
Thank you for going through.
Thanks so much.
Thanks so much, okay, very good, we're on to agenda item number four, which is community choice aggregation. Michelle, community choice aggregation. Very excited about this, um, at least I am. We had a presentation about it at our last meeting, um, our attorney to the town has been working diligently on a draft law for a special consideration, which is in front of you. We would of course need to set up a public hearing to get input on that draft law, if you feel it's, you're ready to do so. It's modeled after, um. The sample that was given to us, which by the way, was approved by NYSERDA. And so I wondered if A, you've had any questions, B, if you feel you're ready to, um. Support this type of an initiative and put it up, uh, for public hearing. Perhaps. The second meeting, maybe we have enough time to do it in the first meeting. Uh, February. Any thoughts about this?
Have the public hearing that date?
On the. Well, Sue, help me here. February twelfth.
Twelfth is the next meeting.
Um, and, um, Chris has been kind enough to include the, uh, D S C. Order authorizing the framework for C C A as well in your package.
And, and while it's long, I would call your attention to appendix D, which, um, explains the rules for municipal programs. I think that might be what you might want to, uh, take a look at more specifically.
Right. Well, I'm, I'm ready to put it up for a public hearing on February twelfth, I think it's very exciting.
For work.
Okay. Seven thirty-five, that would be resolution number?
Nine.
Nine, thank you, Sue. Of twenty nineteen. Establishing a date for a public hearing regarding the adoption by the town board of the town of Red Hook of a local law. A proposed of twenty nineteen regarding establishing a community choice aggregation program for the town of Red Hook. And there's a first and a second, seven thirty-five on the twelfth.
February twelfth, right?
Yeah. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Okay, moving right along, at least for tonight, it feels like moving right along. Again, good news, you all know, we received, um, and thanks to Sarah and Dan Rubin and others who prepared the grant. We did receive funding from New York State Department of Transportation for our two electric vans. We had some conversations with D O T, it's the first, um. Type of project that they've seen like this, they're very excited about it as well. And as always, anytime we get grant monies and we have, I don't know how many grant projects, funded products we have going on right now. There's a requirement to approve a contract. In order to receive the monies and, um. D O T acts as a conduit, it's really federal money, much like when we constructed the sidewalks. Section fifty-three-ten enhances mobility of seniors and individuals with disabilities and. I'm sure you reviewed every word of the sixty-nine page contract. And so I would like to, there's a checklist to sort of make it easy on you, some other requirements. For not-for-profits that would be involved in the project. And this is still gonna take some, some time, federal money passing through the state, but this is sort of the first step. And so if you're ready, I'd like to, uh, make a motion. Resolution. Number ten, authorizing the execution of this federal contract, section fifty-three-ten. Enhance mobility of seniors and individuals with disabilities with two electric vans. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Yes?
So, you know, I heard this and it's exciting. We did have a lot of questions, even at the time that we wrote it, about what this would actually look like.
Programmatically?
In the parking lot and on the ground, as it were. Who would drive it? Where these items would be kept? Who will maintain them? Who gets to use them? Where do they go? I don't have a problem authorizing this, but I. We need to talk at some point about those things.
Oh yeah, the program.
Preferably before they show up. And I'm just wondering what the plan is for that.
Yeah, so the plan is that we are going to have many months before these vans show up begin, in fact. I wouldn't be surprised if it was a full year from now. But to ensure, and we didn't know that we were getting the funds, um, in earnest until a couple of weeks ago, so to, you know, develop the program. And we also have to do some Title IX stuff unless we're gonna work underneath, uh, the county's, um, Title IX program, of which I expect we will. So yes, we'll have to put together a committee, uh, the Asensio Foundation wants to be involved as well because they're partnering. With the town for the funding, um, so they'd like to have a seat at the table and so yes, um, as far as where they'll be. We anticipate they'll be on municipal property at least charging, um, and, you know, we have, uh, charging stations here and. We think more coming, uh, with the second round of, of funding. So, but programmatically, there are a lot of questions and answers that need to be developed, so yes, the, the committee or task force needs to be established, so. We have plenty of time because it's federal money running through the state. If you're familiar with the sidewalk project, I think we were granted money for that in twenty thirteen and construction started in twenty seventeen or something, so. But yes. Okay. We have a second, uh, conversation, any other, uh, discussion?
I, I missed you second.
Oh, it was Bill did. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Alright, um. Getting late, um, just very quickly on reorganization, I don't think we've heard back yet, uh, from. A lot of our committees or chairs, so let's see if we can just tackle. Perhaps page. One and two. Shall we, of reorg? So we have our appointments, uh, some of which we made official town newspaper, I think we tackled in our resolution at the last meeting. We have our depositories through, um, officers to physicians of receiver of taxes, vital statistics. All the way down to all our employees for the different departments, our panda representatives. And including our town engineers. I don't believe we've had any changes in those areas, uh, supervisors' appointments, I'm not proposing any, uh, changes to those appointments. Highway superintendent appointments, Teresa just left, but I don't believe she's proposing any change to the deputy superintendent, but. She can let us know in the future of the meeting if that's the case. Our other town employees and officers, um, you'll notice some of these have been updated, we had some change in some of our employees. Related to the solid waste attendants, maintenance and groundskeeper, solid waste attendants, basically the folks that work. The terrific folks that work at our recycling center. Recreation park and obviously the cemetery, uh, the staffing there, we also had a change during corporate twenty eighteen. A replacement of one of our, one of our water district meter readers, in fact, I noticed on this latest iteration, it doesn't, oh, it does include Brian Smith. Okay. So we're, we're still at three water meters, readers, okay. Contract consultants. I'm not recommending any changes to those. Unless anyone has some thoughts, I know the water board, um. Extended or asked for us to extend their contract with P R I. Okay, so shall we move to the second portion of the second page, which is, you know, related to meetings, um, we're not, uh, contemplating, are we changing the schedule for the meetings for twenty nineteen? We're okay with keeping them second Tuesday, fourth Wednesday? It would be nice one time to consider doing something different, but maybe we could tackle that. Next year. Monthly and annual reports to the town board. We are by and large getting those reports. On that basis, I don't recall whether or not the C A C has been doing an annual report on April first. Um, I know the work commission does an annual report.
Talk to the C A C about that.
Yeah.
It would be nice to invite the active committees to come in person sometime. Like their chairs, you know, like give, come and give a report in person.
Yeah, they used to do that.
Yeah. Like once a year or something, you know?
Yeah.
Not, not all, maybe not all the same meeting.
Summary and annual, annual summary, yeah, I think that's gonna be. Others think that's a good idea, I mean, if they come, they come, if they don't, they don't. Okay. Town board organizational responsibility, the chain of command. Always feel like man of the chain of command. Responsibilities supervisor, deputy supervisor, town board members, not about a full order. The last item on this page is the area has changed its mileage reimbursement. To reflect an increase in gas prices. Town departments, again, we talk about the chain. Why don't we see if we can do page three? Town board liaisons to town departments, have you all given any thought to? Which committees and boards you liaise with and whether or not you would like to make a change to one of them? Recognizing, of course, you would have to find a replacement if you did make a change to one of them.
We're gonna deprive animal control out of my cold, dead, non-elected fingers. But I can wait until next January.
I wouldn't, uh, I wouldn't change any of it.
My little chart is, in my house, you know, just checking out the days.
On that note. On that note.
You can make a few comments.
We'll leave that be.
I know Harry wants to make that, I'm sticking with the-
Certainly not while we're in.
Okay, so we will, we will consider Sarah's kind of. Board and committee liaisons, the various committees, and we need to jumpstart a couple of those committees, but are there any of the committees that folks would like to consider swapping?
The only change I would like to make in mine is I'm not able to make Monday night, the Monday night Recreation Commission meetings, and so, you know, I keep on top of what they're doing anyway, but I think since Harry's the liaison, I assume you wish to continue that, I'm okay with not being one, since we've pretty much moved to one board member per boarder commission. So, I would take my leave on that.
Okay. Harry, do you have sufficient athletic background to be the liaison for the Recreation Committee?
Mostly it's-
You hang out in their office all the time, sounds good.
Not so much athletic as, as wear the fuses.
Wear the fuses, okay. I do notice though, unless I'm missing it here, pretty good alphabetizing, one of the few things I can do well. I don't see the cemetery committee listed here, obviously, Bill, that's you as the liaison for that, right? So, we should add that on this list, Sue, if we could? Okay.
I think I'm actually on the committee, aren't I?
Well, you're the liaison too. That will do it.
So, you want the members, or what?
This is just the list of liaisons.
No, this is just for who the board liaison is for each today.
Oh, the liaison, the liaison. Oh, on this list, I mean.
Yeah. Again, why don't we, for February twelfth, let's do our best to try and liaise with the committee chairs and make sure we know who's interested in staying on, any recommendations they have for new members, so that we could really try to tackle this at that meeting, if we could. I know that we have, and this way we can advertise some openings and get some new members.
We don't have a liaison with the LWRP?
Well, I think we have temporary task force, like LWRP is not going to be a recurring year-after-year committee, is that correct, or do you envision it?
No.
So, like the-
But we don't need it listed here?
I don't, I don't think so. I mean, it's a task force, just like the Natural Resources Extraction Group, I don't know that we need to-
Good movie.
Okay. So, can we leave the rest till next meeting, but let's do our best, please, if you could, with your committees to try and reach out, see if we can answer some of those questions. Okay, let's move on to agenda item number seven, if we could, and that's some minister via, which is once again to appoint a delegate for the Association of Towns' annual conference.
Motion, Robert.
Okay, that didn't take very long.
I guess. All in favor?
You're supposed to run it, to have an alternate of all the stuff.
Yes. Yes, who's, is, is there anybody else besides me going down there?
No, I can't go.
I can't go.
Well, I know Ann Conway's going, so we could appoint her as a delegate.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be a town board member, it can be a, it can be a town employee?
I, I don't think it has to be a town board member. I don't think it has to be.
Or could be a town justice.
Because it isn't only, yeah, there's a lot of people going down that won't even be on the town board.
Yeah, so, I would propose, since I know Ann is hoping to go down there, and we can confer, well, wish nothing happened to me, so that I can't be there for the voting matters on Wednesday morning.
So, will you review the matters before the, have you already reviewed the matters before, that were gonna be coming before the town, so that you know, oh, you're-
Usually you do a letter before a meeting, like I think it's-
Yes.
So, I mean, just to be, you do that.
Usually we direct the voting members before the meeting, or how we wish to vote against the town.
Right, so you have, you jumped the gun on me there, Chris. That was the next, that was the next thing, which is, I gave you all the proposed resolutions, we have another meeting, since AOT is not until the nineteenth, so you have a couple of weeks to review them, unless you are ready now to-
I'm ready, I'm ready to-
Yeah, I'm ready.
Are you really?
Yeah.
Well, I thought I heard from at least one of them.
The occupancy tax is still a matter of being discussed, but it's kinda cool.
Is everybody ready to vote on these resolutions? Christine?
Well, I'm not, 'cause I couldn't read them today.
I didn't read them either.
Yeah, okay, so, I would like everybody to have an opportunity to study them, 'cause some of them have implications.
I mean, for example, the nominee for the fourth vice president.
That's a tough one for you.
Supreme, from the town of Rhode Island, I mean, I don't even-
They're easily entertained.
Somebody's getting punch drunk here. All right, so at our next meeting, let's be prepared to vote individually on the resolutions, or at least point out, I understand. So, resolutions-
I didn't waste the paper and print it out at home.
Harry, resolution number eleven.
Yeah.
Dated today, appointing voting delegates, is Robert McKeon an alternate, Ann Conway? And I assume, is there a second?
Second. Third.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. It is nine-thirty-two. Can we take ten minutes before we go into a brief attorney client to just quickly summarize our reports, just highlights from our boards, starting with Planning Board, Christine?
Okay, so the Planning Board met twice in December, but no meetings during January. They had public hearings and granted conditional approval to a lot line alteration on West Curly Corners Road and a, to AT&amp;T and new singular wireless on Twin Towers Drive. And they started reviewing a minor subdivision and lot line alteration for property on Middle Road.
Great. Thank you, Christine. Sarah, monthly dog report.
Okay. Okay, so this is ready for November and December. I'm just, okay. So, for November, there were two loose dogs, related incidents, and one nuisance dog. And apparently the postman was bit by a small dog while delivering the mail, but the postman declined a dangerous dog hearing, so I guess that's good. And then three loose dogs and one nuisance dog in December, so that brings our yearly total to two dangerous dog related incidents, six human loose dogs, six nuisance dogs, four wildlife and cat calls, and two dogs impounded, and two dogs reclaimed, so that's good math. And we thank the DCSPCA for giving us some good service in two thousand and eighteen, and remind people to take care of your pets in the cold weather, to keep them confined to your property in a humane manner, to not let them bite innocent people like the postman. If you can help it, please, take care of your animals.
Well, again, I know it's late and Sarah's definitely punch drunk, but we ask you to please take seriously the fact that your dog may be loose and unexpectedly causing harm. We've had some sort of tragic incidents in the past, and, you know, for everyone's sake, we wanna avoid that going in the future.
Sarah, I just have a question. I did not receive any reports of dangerous dog calls, so, just, I know they've been in transition there, so I wanna make sure that we have good communication about that, if it is going on.
The dangerous dog reports were all the way back, there was one in March and one in, looks like June. I know we did have the one in March that we talked about.
Oh, that, oh, this was, I thought this was in November, December, was it?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, so I was, I was saying, so the yearly total, I was reading off was two dangerous dog incidents altogether.
So, these are yearly-
December is cumulative, I think.
This is cumulative to the year, not what, to December?
That last column, that final column.
I see.
So-
It's not clear, it just says November, so, I see, I see, okay.
So, each of those columns is a different month?
Okay, so it's not, like, we had two in December, so, okay, all right.
No, it's a yearly cumulative.
All right, I just wanna make sure we have communication about these, and I also wanna make it clear that it's not up to the complainant necessarily, if there's a dog bite, the dog officer is supposed to make an assessment of danger to the community, we need to make sure that SPCA is doing that and communicating that to you, okay?
Okay, so I'll refresh them on that, in case they're not aware that we want to get a full report, even if the complaint decides not to file.
Right, and to the extent the information, right, and it may not, you know, it may not come to that, lots of times it doesn't, but we just need to make sure that that's the assessment of the dog control officer, that it doesn't need to be pursued.
Yeah. In your assessment, is that like, so, you know, for example, the postman being bit wasn't considered a dangerous dog incident by the dog officer?
Sure, I mean, she notes that it's a small dog, so presumably she reads that conclusion. I just want, again, I just wanna make sure that these reports are adequate for you to make sure that they're doing what we're expecting them to do.
Yeah. She feel like that sentence isn't adequate, or is it okay?
It's a little sketchy, so, you know, yeah.
More information.
Maybe a little more information on the report, right.
Since it's a-
Well, if you have a dangerous dog call, I would think you should get a copy of the report, is what I would think, not just a little summary.
So, I'll just refresh them on that. Which happened in the past, and I just wanna say, it didn't, there were no dangerous dog calls in December.
Right, right.
But just to remind about that, and that we may even need a little bit more on the special interest notes, just to, yeah.
Well, or just a copy of the report from that particular incident, so that you can look at this.
Assuming that there is a report.
It's important to track a particular dog also.
Yeah.
Okay, so, right, and owner information or address or something, okay?
Okay, assessor's report, Christine, if you would.
Okay, it's short, but I'm just gonna read it, 'cause there's important information in it. So, this is for December and January and dated today. The assessor's office has been busy accepting and entering the data for all the exemption renewals. This will be the final year for the assessor's office to determine eligibility for the Enhanced Star exemption renewals. Our office is entering all current data on the New York State Tax and Finance IVP program. This program is an income verification program for Enhanced Star only. The assessor will continue accepting and verifying for the seniors, agricultural and nonprofit exemptions. Then she continues to update the inventory on existing and new construction parcels in the town and villages, and the office has not received sales information for December and January as of today.
Okay. And just for the folks at home, we don't have full staffing in that office, unfortunately, one of our employees has some health issues and is out, and so, we would just like to let you know, the office is open, full days, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, also Tuesday afternoon and Friday morning, so perhaps a better way to have said it would be Tuesday mornings, there will be nobody there, Friday afternoons, there will be nobody there, otherwise you can come in and see the assessor during those hours, and we thank you for your patience. Harry, building and zoning?
Okay, this is a two-month report. There were thirty-four permits, fifty-four inspections, CO has issued fifty-one, there were nineteen complaints, revenue brought in was just over seventeen thousand dollars, and I did note that Ted Cutsey replaced his roof, his shingles. He's our purchasing agent, that's why I had to announce it.
In his church somewhere?
Yes, at his house.
Not paid for by the town.
No.
Okay. On that note, Bill, would you report on the police department, please?
Well, as of December the fourth report, the Village of Red Oak Police Department had reported a hundred and fifty incidents that they dealt with, they made a total of twelve arrests and issued seventeen tickets. And the, for the period ending in January, there were a hundred and eighteen incidents reported and dealt with, there were eight arrests and they issued thirty-six tickets. So, those are the two-month data.
And I just wanted to let you know that our speed trailer arrived today, finally, after traveling across country, and so, the police department is putting it together, the parts that need to be added to it, and so, you'll be seeing that out on our roads. And I think I sent around to you, if I'm not mistaken, the county report on the particular roadways where travelers are going quite excessively, and so, we'll obviously focus on those roads in particular initially, and nine G as well, one oh three River Road, which were part of our agreement with the state.
But not West Curly Corners.
What's that?
What, the West Curly Corners?
Well, we can move it around, it's all portable, but we're gonna start with, you know, the agreement that we have with DOT. All right, very good. We have Harry reporting on our purchase orders, and I think he actually references the trailer there.
Yeah, there's a request for proposals on the, for the cost of the trailer and, no, wait a minute, I'm looking, I'm saying that from memory, in any case, that's so, that's also, so, there's also, there's a, a proposal out for that, for the charging station. There's a, a study being for the consolidation of village and town courts, there's an RFP out for solar panels, we had a number of people come in and, and look at the, the needs here, and we'll be making a, fulfilling the RFP request. And the playground equipment, the replacement of equipment on the playground has been shipped and it's been stored in Albany until the spring.
Okay, and I know that the playground subcommittee is actively seeking volunteers, it's a community bill, scheduled for the last week in April, the first week in May, did I get that correct?
I think it's the two first weekends in May, I think that's right.
Two first weekends in May? We'll be looking for volunteers, you don't have to be particularly skilled, if you are, that's even better. There's lots to do for everybody, and it should be a fun event over the course of two weeks.
Bill, can I ask you something, sorry, I just don't usually glance through the police report, but I've noticed in the security section, have you, do you ever look at that? It's just really strange, just like every day they're going to Carriage Drive, of like November and December, and I'm wondering if you ever noticed that before, it just seems really strange.
You don't want them to go to Carriage Drive?
Well, turn around the corner for my house, for one thing, I'm just curious for the neighborhood, but also, it just seems like a strange.
Sometimes residents, I think when they're going away, request.
But that's two months in a row, they went every day. I'm just-
Maybe they have good coffee in there.
I mean, I'm gonna ask them, but if you wanna ask them-
Yeah, you could ask them.
Yeah, I'll, I can, I can investigate.
It just seems, well.
Yeah, aye. Okay, Harry, if you would be kind enough to report briefly on water?
Water is, is, everything is running well, right up to snuff with the water, there's been no equipment failures or anything, so I think things are doing fine, and all tests have been passed easily.
Okay. Next up, we have, Bill, if you'd report on the task force, please?
Well, the intermunicipal task force in December and January continued to review the subject of short-term rentals in the town of Red Oak, and whether there should be regulation of Airbnbs. In January, some of the task force went to a meeting in the town of Reinbeck, sponsored by their planning board on the subject of short-term rentals. And notes were made of what was talked about at that meeting, and they're floating around somewhere, I don't see them in our packets, but they're at town hall somewhere. I don't see them in our packets, but they're at Town Hall somewhere. And that discussion continues.
Okay. Very good. Rec Commission report, who would like to do that?
I can do it. So I know that John had reached out to Kathleen Dunn, the director from last year, that we were also happy with. Unfortunately, she's not going to be able to come in to being director this year, so that's a position I know John will be advertising soon, and that's.
But we know she won't be able to do it.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, changing what we hoped would be the case. So everybody put on their thinking caps, who can help us this year. And then there was some proactive tree removal and trimming and cabling, just trying to stay aware of the health of the trees in the playground area, especially in light of building all new equipment there. We wanted to make sure that any site work that needs to be done to keep everybody safe there is done. And just to reinforce that, no trees are being removed because of a playground project. It's all just to keep everybody safe. And of course, our goal is to keep as many healthy trees there as possible. So we thank John for being so diligent about that. And Robert already mentioned the playground build. There's a bunch of further improvements to the tennis courts that are contemplated, and we hope to have some wind screens up and some bounce boards, things like that. There's been a lot of work on the snack bar area, and now we're going to have to do a bunch of projects for the electricity there, right? We've had to get a generator, is that right?
Well, no, as, as it, it doesn't look like we're going to get a temporary generator, but with the assistance of Central Hudson, we're trying to locate the problem. There's a very primary line between two transformers initially. Just thought maybe we own one of those transformers. Of course, we don't, they, they belong to Central Hudson. But they're going to try to assist us in locating exactly where the break is or the fault is. And then we can, you know, take a look at the options on either repair or complete replacement. Obviously, putting a new line down would require excavation, something, of course, that is not easy to do right now.
Yeah, which is why I thought we'd need the generator, because it'll work on interior painting and stuff for the snack bar.
Exactly, well, so John has a generator, so he's just going to be kind enough to bring his generator over there, but we won't have to purchase one. We feel that, you know, the employees have an extra one that we can just bring over there for the time being. I did pose the question, should we have one on the ready? Would that make sense? So they're giving that some consideration.
Well, sorry, we don't have to discuss it now, but I would wonder if the Disaster Preparedness Committee has addressed whether the town should have a generator for disaster preparedness, which could also be used for things like this snack bar work.
Yes, one of, one of my own personal missions is trying to assist our residents and our businesses, and certainly our municipal buildings in having backup power, because, you know, with all these storms, we all sort of live in fear of knowing when and if we're going to lose power, so.
Well, if the Town Hall is a warming center.
We have one, we're all set, we're all set here.
Is it, is it? But it's not portable?
It's not portable.
Right.
No, it's not, so, yeah, having, having a couple of portable ones is probably a really terrific idea. I did pose the question to John, let's see what they come back with on that. Yeah, even up at the cemetery, you know, we can move one up there now that we own that problem, so. Great, I'm sorry, Sarah, continue with your report.
No, so there's just a lot going on in the snack bar area, that's all I'm going to say. There's a lot of items here. Anybody who's really interested can read it. I believe these reports are available on the website, or if they're not, please contact our office, and we can share them with you. But there's a lot of thought and work being put into pavilion maintenance and repair, wind screens for the pavilion, wind screens for the tennis courts, snack bar outside and inside repair and renovation, so.
Pickleball courts, we can't forget.
Pickleball courts are contemplated and planned for over in the inline skating rink area. There's the grant for the restroom improvements that is underway. All of this is sort of planned to be done before the peak rec season, right? Or ish, within 2019?
As soon as possible, yes, I think that works.
At some point within 2019, we should have a huge community party there just to celebrate all the wonderful improvements. But we thank John, his team and crew, Doug, for being so diligent there. There's a lot going on. They are also working on updating the website and getting sort of up to speed on that, so that we'll provide a lot of real-time updates in the summertime. Their sort of peak time for programming and things like that. So we're working with them and Town Hall staff to make sure that that's possible. Again, everybody sign up at the Town website at the top. It's a notify me, it takes one minute to just click down and update your preferences, and you can get all those updates by text or email, including recognition.
Okay, and last report is tree preservation?
Okay, so tree work on Plinter Lane was completed by Integral Tree and Landscaping and Ken McLeirelli, Ken. Stump removal will be scheduled after the first of the year. Site prep and anticipation of spring planting will continue throughout the winter months. Hot Michael, committee member, will prune trees on Red Church property during the winter months. And there's been discussion of involving all the community, particularly high schools students in their programs, so they are still busy even in the winter.
I would just mention that that report talks about removal of stems as well as the Rec Committee is looking at removal of stems, so it's quite coordinated.
Yeah, I know they do communicate a lot with each other, so I think they do, do that. I can mention it, just in case they.
We do. We, we discuss it all the time, because we have bid rates from our tree removal company daily and weekly, and oftentimes we, we figure out if we've got enough work to get the weekly rate versus the daily rate, so, yeah. Great. Okay, very good, folks. It's nearing upon 10 o'clock, and I'm going to make a motion that we go into a brief attorney-client session. First, thank you all for joining us from home, and wishing everybody a safe, you know, January and winter season. And again, you know, look, look to the town to let you know about what's going on during the stormy weather. Redhook.org, notify me. Okay, without further ado, I'd like to make a motion to go into attorney-client.
Second.
All in favor? Bye-bye. Thank you all very much.
Good night, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.